Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the July 23rd, 2025 meeting of the Fond du Lac City Council. The first item of business is roll call, which is done electronically, and I will declare a quorum present with Mr. Mullen absent. The next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, which is followed by a moment of silent reflection. Please rise. Next on our agenda is public hearings, and we have none, so we will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda finalizes the proposed actions for the meeting. A, July 9th, 2025 minutes. B, July 9th, 2025 closed session minutes. And C, list of claims dated July 16th, 2025. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Godfrey and second by Mr. Zimmerman. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. And that passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is Audience Comments, Agenda and Non-Agenda Items. The presiding officer will limit speaking time for non-Agenda items to one minute and items noticed on the agenda to five minutes. Ms. Hefter, do we have anyone wishing to speak?
We do not.
We do not? So that ends our Audience Comments. Next, we'll move on to our Action Items. Action Item A is Change of Agent Class A Intoxicating Liquor and Class A Fermented Malt License, Limited Liability Company GPM Southeast LLC, agent name Regina Nowinski, doing business as Our Store, business address 1304 Old County Road V. And our introduction is by our City Clerk, Ms. Hefter.
Thank you, President Brought. This is a standard agent change for two locations in Fond du Lac for Our Store's Class A licenses. Background checks were done on the proposed agent, and city staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Hefter? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Godfrey and second by Mr. Heisler. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. And that passes unanimously. Item B is Class of Agent Class A Intoxicating Liquor and Class A Fermented Malt License. Again, the limited liability company is GPM Southeast LLC, agent name Regina Nowinski, doing business as Our Store, business address 351 Fond du Lac Avenue. Are there any questions on this item? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Schussler and second by Ms. Leering. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. And that passes unanimously. Item C is Resolution Number 9194, a resolution approving the final plat of Hidden Valley Phase 1 subdivision with our introduction by our Community Development Director, Ms. Benson.
Thank you, Ms. Brought. As you're aware, from time to time, when we want to facilitate development, particularly in the residential, and we have large areas of land, they need to be divided. And under state statute, once you divide beyond a certain number of lots, you need to do what is called a subdivision. Starts with a preliminary plat, which is reviewed by Plan Commission, and then the final plat is reviewed by Plan Commission as well as by City Council. It ensures that the plat meets all of our drainage, stormwater, road, and lot requirements. This has been reviewed by Plan Commission at their last meeting. They recommend approval with the recommended technical corrections and conditions as outlined by the engineer.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Benson? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Godfrey and second by Ms. Leering. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. And that passes unanimously. Item D is Resolution Number 9195, a resolution making reappointments to the Fond du Lac Public Library Board and City Plan Commission with our introduction by our City Manager, Mr. Moore.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. These are renominations for the Library Board. I recommend approval of Julie Schrader to that board and also Brad Leonard to Plan Commission as a reappointment.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Moore? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Schussler, second by Mr. Heisler. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. And that passes unanimously. Item E is Ordnance Number 3811, an ordinance amending chapter... Oh, sorry. That was not correct. So that ends our action items. So now we'll move on to our presentation of input items. We will start with our Wage Study Overview presented by City Manager, Mr. Moore.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we are not at the end of the road, but we're far down the road of a project that started last year with the 2025 budget. And I want to introduce to you Mary Ann Oyas. She is of the Archer Group. It's a company that we selected from a group of seven. Right after the first of the year, we sent out a request for proposal across the country. We got seven proposals back from around the country, went through a rigorous review and chose the Archer Company. Mary Ann's been the lead on that since then, and she's now at the point of finalizing the report. She has created proposed pay salaries for next year, and Tricia Davey and I have incorporated all of that into our work for the 2026 budget. So Mary Ann's going to talk about what she's done, how she's done it, and what the results were.
Good evening. I'm... Sorry. I'm just bad with technology. It's always a problem. I'm Mary Ann Oyas. I'm actually here from our Raleigh, North Carolina office, but I'm a prisoner down there. I'm a Minnesota, Wisconsin girl, but have had to live in North Carolina for a few years and hoping to try to get back. So it's really nice to be here. Thank you for the introduction. You know, the topics list is longer than the presentation, but I just want to make sure that we sort of review the study objectives, what we were asked to do for the City of Fond du Lac, give you a high overview, high level of the methodology that we used, and the major things that were accomplished during the study, and then talk about the two factors that really drive our pay recommendations. That is internal equity, how we measure and compare jobs that sometimes are very dissimilar to each other, as well as market equity, which we achieve through a market study. I'll give high-level findings on a very comprehensive survey we did of 15 peers as well as private sector data that talks about the level of competitiveness of your current pay and benefits. And then we'll introduce the concepts around the new pay structure, recommendations for implementing the new structure, and then just a bit of an overview of review and recommendations we did of your compensation policies, and some just general recommendations of how to keep this new pay plan, you know, in which you've invested time and consulting fees, and a lot of staff time, too. How to keep it current from year to year. The objectives really were to take a look at all city positions. It's about 225 positions or employees in about 140 job titles. You know, cities are really diverse organizations in terms of the functions, which makes our work particularly interesting. We learned about the jobs through the use of questionnaires that either the employees completed or their managers, you know, about what they do, what the requirements are, and all sorts of aspects of the jobs. We met with each of the department heads two, three, or even four times to learn more about specific roles. So while I've been fortunate to do this work for about 34 years, every city's different, and every job's a little different. So part of the reason of meeting with them was to make sure I understood what each job did, talk about relationships between the jobs, and then get feedback on any pay problems they were having. So there were some concerns about some jobs have been difficult to recruit, some jobs the cities had kind of high turnover. I hadn't heard... I didn't hear anything I don't hear from time to time, but our mission was to identify legitimate pay issues that are of a concern and come back with some recommendations. As I said, we completed this comprehensive market study. So all of this data was filtered into our recommendations for a new pay structure, which is designed to meet the city's human resources objectives, which generally is to hire good people and keep good people and, you know, keep them motivated and productive over a number of years. We worked with the project team then to provide some implementation recommendations. We'll talk about the implementation recommendation that's been selected that we completely support. So a lot of objectives. Again, we reviewed every single job and have provided a pay grade recommendation for every city job. The market analysis was done on a large sample of jobs, so over half of the city employees were covered in that survey in terms of the jobs that we selected, you know, representative sample of jobs from different departments, different functions, different pay levels. And then we took a look at all your major benefit categories, paid time off, all the insurance programs, and any other, you know, major benefit area. In doing that, we reviewed the expenditures that you make on behalf of the employees at Fond du Lac and compared that to benefits expenditures made by the peer cities that we looked at to see whether or not your expenditures were kind of at market or higher or lower than market. As I mentioned, we have created a revised pay structure, and we're honing in on one implementation cost plan. And then we, as I said, we did a policy review. We met with the employees over three presentations today, so I think it seems like a majority of the employees were able to attend one or more of the presentations, had some great questions, seemed like there was general interest in the plan, and I hope folks felt like they could ask questions because either they did, you know, in a group, or sometimes they would come up afterwards. That's important, that employees are heard with their questions. This is complicated stuff. So just a little bit about that internal equity factor. This is... We have a different system than the system you've used for a number of years, but the objective when we do point factor valuation is to really measure each of the city jobs and look at different aspects of what makes a job difficult. So the level of education and experience, the decisions made. We look at physical requirements. We look at environmental risks. So a very broad measurement, if you will, of each city position. Then we come back and we stack them from, you know, highest to lowest in terms of those compensable, they're called, or job evaluation factors. Right now, your current pay grade system is you have 18 grades, and we've added six grades. We felt there really could be a little bit more nuanced distinction between some of the jobs in the city as opposed to your current pay structure. So we've added four... Excuse me, six grades. So job evaluation sort of says what grade each of the jobs should be in, but then the question is, well, what should those pay ranges be? And so that's where we do the market assessment. We worked with the project team to define who your peers are, and we define that pretty simply. Who do you lose people to? Who do you hire people from? Department heads had input into that, and the sort of list of 14 cities rose to the top. I've worked with every single one of those cities in my career, and I know enough about them to confirm it was our opinion that the list of 14 cities really truly are your peers. As I mentioned, the custom survey included a representative sample of jobs and all your major benefit programs. Each one of the cities participated, which means a lot, because if you don't have sufficient data, you can't make sufficient recommendations. So the cities in Wisconsin, unlike some states I work in, cities in Wisconsin kind of help each other, and I just find that very refreshing, to be honest. Here's the peers. I don't think there would be any surprises here. Some of them are a bit larger, some are a bit smaller, but their structures, their functions are pretty comparable to yours, you know, in the main. Those are the talent competitors, and as I mentioned before, we also brought in private sector data as one of the comparisons for jobs that exist in the private sector: accountants, engineers, heavy equipment operators, and so on. So I think it was a very thorough analysis. Here's the major findings. Overall, we found that the city's pay ranges are at the low end of what we call a competitive range. So if you think about computing average pay for any job, sure, you can come up with a number and say the average pay for a planner one is $65,000, but the market is really a range of pay, and we hone in on a range within the range that's, you know, 5% or 10% above or below the average, and that becomes what we call the competitive range. We found only three jobs where your current pay ranges are higher than 10% above market, if you will, but 33% of the jobs, the current pay ranges have a range midpoint that's below that competitive range. So they're low from a market standpoint, and I think that's validated by some of the anecdotal evidence we received on some jobs are open for months and so forth. So it all sort of fit together. All right, well, let's move forward now. So our recommended ranges are meant to bring the, you know, the step one, the minimum rates, all of the new pay steps and that top rate into alignment with pay for those 14 cities with a nod as well to private sector. And we define that as about an hour commuting distance. The employers that are within about an hour. Most people won't commute more than an hour. On the pay practices and benefits side, we found overall there's a number of benefits you have here that are above market. They're really competitive. The biggest probably is all of the health coverage add-ons you offer to the employees on top of the insurance. So the health clinic, very nice feature, not a lot of cities have those, health clinic, the Teladoc service, the Garner service, which can help employees reduce their out-of-pocket expenses, and then the free access to physical therapy. Wonderful package. The referral bonus program is not something we see in most of those communities. The fact that employees can purchase short-term disability insurance, the fact that you, as the employer, pay for their entire life insurance premium, your number of sick days is above market, you know, more than average. None of your benefits that are above average are so outlier... so far above that I would say, you might want to think about reining that in, but they're competitive, they're healthy, they offer a really nice message to employees that you care about their well-being, and that's critical, I think, in the Stan age. There's a few areas where the benefits could be improved a little bit. It's always a matter of expense and impact. We did recommend an increase to the promotional increase. That's the increase an employee receives when they move into a job at a higher pay grade. We're recommending a move from you're averaging 2.5% or 3% up to about 8% for a promotion. That's still pretty conservative in the market, but it's competitive. The lack of... The city doesn't contribute any money toward dental insurance, and the maximum annual benefit for employees under dental is a little below market. Those are things that are not significantly below market, however. The number of vacation days, depending on the years of service, is one or two days below market. The city's got all sorts of good current market data from us now that can be used if you do want to make a change in that regard. And then the fact that you have kind of a different vacation accrual schedule for exempt versus non-exempt employees, that used to be very popular, but that's sort of gone by the wayside. You still have that. Something to consider. The blue banner is basically saying that if you take a look at your medical coverage plan and you compare it to the peer agencies, the employee-only and family coverage tiers, your premiums are just more expensive than the peer average, by more than a little bit. So, you know, it raises a flag in terms of, well, should you take a look at the medical coverage plan? That ends my expertise. I would not go further. The market can only tell us, hey, it's worth taking a look at this, but the benefit to the employees is really outstanding and significantly above market. We went a little further with the benefits, and we compared the major contributions that you're making on behalf of the employees for health and for retirement. And what we put into that calculation is in the middle. It's the health, all those premium contributions, any contributions you make to a health savings account or flex spending account, and then your contributions to deferred... Excuse me, defined benefit, the retirement plans. So we added up how much you're spending on employees, and we did the same thing for all those 14 peers. And the major finding we found, you know how I told you before, a number of your jobs were low in the market on a base pay basis? When you bring in the benefit contributions you're making, the picture changes, and a number of those jobs become competitive if what you're measuring is total compensation, including pay and benefits. So it was, I think, a really good analysis to be completed so you have a robust, broad picture of the competitiveness of your reward program for the city employees. The biggest finding is kind of in the middle there, where if we look at the City of Fond du Lac's contributions to the health plan in terms of premiums and so forth, and we compare that to the other cities, your contribution's about 25% higher than the market average. That's a significant finding, and it's certainly worth noting. And that difference doesn't even include the expenditures you're incurring for the employee health clinic and all those other add-ons. So again, there's nothing here that I would say is an outlier where I'd say, hey, Fond du Lac, you might want to reconsider. On the contrary, it's just a strong message to employees that you're putting your money where your mouth is about caring about their well-being. It's not all about pay. Well-being is health, too, and, you know, the investment you're making is very positive. Okay? Now, in terms of developing the pay structure, we took the salary survey, so we knew what, you know, a number of your jobs were worth in the market. Each of the jobs were scored. Through that, we developed the new pay structure with the pay ranges. Just a few things about the new pay structure. So every job is graded. Jobs that are in a given pay grade are with jobs that may be very different from them, but the point score was very similar. We expanded the range width, and that's the difference or the percentage growth from the first step to the top step. Yours is about 29%. The market was averaging about 38% or 40%. So in working with the project team, we've recommended that you expand that range width to 40%, and where you're kind of below market is at the top. So we've recommended that that growth be put on the top of the range by adding two additional steps to the pay plan. So currently, employees move through 11 steps. In the recommended plan, they will move through 13 steps, but the pay growth potential, it really is growing considerably. Instead of kind of a 13% lift from the middle of the range to the top, we've expanded it to 20. Takes a couple more years to get there, but the idea is that when people are at the top of the range, they've been with you a number of years, you've invested a tremendous amount in them, and they have in you as well, and those are the folks or among the folks you don't want to lose. And so the idea is this adds more of a retention incentive to those long-term, successful, productive employees. The final part of the... The big part of the study then at that point was, well, we know what the ranges need to look like. We know the pay of the current employees, and so how do we move them on to the new ranges? We call that pay plan implementation. We looked at a number of options and costed them out with the help of finance and human resources. What did we think about in making a recommendation? Well, we wanted to make sure that employees in similar situations were treated equitably. So every department kind of will follow the same process. We're not treating some departments better than others and so forth. Budget availability is always a big consideration. City only has so much money available for pay plans. The new structure recommendations, if you approve them, would take effect January 1st of 2026, and those costs have been incorporated into the city's budget. So that work is done and has been deemed from the project team and city manager to be affordable. I do want to mention, part of the implementation is there are 76 employees that are in the jobs where the current pay ranges are not competitive, and we highly recommend first line of businesses kind of getting those people onto the pay range. So again, 76 people who would move on to the minimum, at a minimum, they should beat the minimum, because if they're below that range minimum, the pay is really sub-competitive, and folks just, at some point, it becomes difficult to continue working when you know that your pay is that low. So, you know, to us, that's a big, you know, part of the plan implementation. So the recommendation to implement the structure planned for January 1st would be that each employee who is below the minimum, these 76 folks, would be brought to step one, which is the first step on the structure, and then moved up one additional step. So they go to minimum, and then boom, they'd go on to step two on the implementation date. And part of that whole math here is that the market data was pulled, you know, by the time the plan is implemented, the market data will be six, seven, eight months old. And so that needed to be considered in terms of making sure that the recommendations would be competitive for the market as it exists on January 2026. Okay? So step two, we talked about employees who are below minimum. They can boom onto minimum and then one more step. The other employees that are currently paid above the new minimum or step one will move on to the step in the new structure that provides an increase, you know, the closest step to their current pay without decreasing their pay, and then they, too, will be moved one additional step on that same date, January 1st. So those costs were prepared by us in conjunction with the city, and again, were found to be workable for the next year's budget. So each employee, in the end, will receive a minimum of 2.6% increase. Employees below minimum, you know, the ones that are really underpaid in the market, their increases will be more than that, in a few cases substantially more, but again, the idea is to get them on to the plan by, you know, by next year. We also made recommendations on just a few of your pay policies. We looked at all the major pay policies. City manager, project team asked us to do that, and we were happy to do it. We found your policies to be in good shape. They were solid, they, in our view, they were compliant with state and federal laws that we're aware of, and they just made sense. We had a few recommendations that we thought might take a good set of policies and enhance them, looking at things such as, again, your promotional policy, how reclassifications work, equity adjustments, and that kind of thing. So relatively few, what I would call pain points, and in those cases, we've made solid recommendations that we hope will help. Now, how do you keep a pay plan current so that you don't have to have an Archer company come out, you know, every other year? There's really four aspects to doing it, and you're doing some of it already. So jobs can change. So if jobs change over time significantly, or you add new jobs, the jobs need to be studied, and they need to be graded. So that's part one, and you've done that in the past. Your HR team has evaluated jobs that have changed. We think in today's market, you probably do need to do a comprehensive market analysis about every four years. If the market is starting to... Labor market's starting to slow down, and there's a lot of indicators, leading indicators, if that continues, you may not have to do it in four years. You might be able to get away with five, but it's going to be somewhere in four to five years. Then three, to continue, and the city does this now, use market data to determine every year, are we going to do a pay increase? Can we afford a pay increase? In a step plan, when the structure is increased, you know, everybody gets that increase. That's one of the aspects of a step plan, is when you increase the structure, everyone's on a step, the step goes up, their pay goes up. So we just recommended a few additional data sources to take a look at. And then the final thing is, you know, just to continue to help employees understand the value of that total compensation package, the amount of money that's being spent on their behalf, just understanding that, as well as the value of that plan, especially in the health area and the retirement area. For example, having a defined benefit plan, which is almost unheard of outside of local government. Those are great plans. I'm not sure people always understand them. And so this is a policy that we generally recommend to all of our clients. Those... That's really the presentation. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
Thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you for joining us tonight. And we will start our questions from council with Ms. Leering.
Um, in the beginning of the presentation, I think it mentioned there's three employees above, is it above average?
There's three employees whose pay range is more than 10% above the, the average among those communities.
Okay. Would they also be increasing in steps, or would they stay since they're already above?
The, so you know, you have to think, there's kind of two things going on. It's, it's what's happening to the pay ranges themselves, and then what's happening to the employees in the pay range. So I, I can't answer that off the top of my head, but we are using the same implementation rules for everybody. They are unlikely to be below the minimum, right? Because their ranges are high. So they're sitting somewhere in that new structure, and they'll go on to a step that provides an increase plus an additional step, unless they're already at the top of their range, which, which could be. And I'm sorry, just, I don't have that detail in my head, but can certainly get you that answer.
Because we have that issue on county board with, with, you know, with the county employees. And sometimes that causes a lot of, I don't know how to put it, it causes employees to talk and to, to get upset about that. Also, the reclasses, I saw that you have, the reclasses are, are a little more than they should be. Do you, that's another issue I've heard when employees, you know, with the reclasses. So who decides those? Would that be the city manager, or who decides the reclassification?
Mary Ann, I'll take that. We, we're putting a moratorium on reclassifications. And, and that's why, Mary Ann, on one of the last slides, bottom right, I think it was, recommended to do those every four or five years, what we've done here. During the, doing the reclasses, as we've been doing on an annual basis and prep for every budget, is good, but it's not comprehensive. So unless there's a significant change in a job, we're not going to do a reclass.
Okay. That's what I was wondering. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zimmerman.
Thank you, Ms. Brol. To follow back, you were talking about, I've always been on the fence about this. We had 11 steps currently, and you're proposing we go to 13. I've always been on the fence, I think 11 was a long ways. Now we're going to bump it to 13. Could you sell me on that a little bit more? Because you said that, you know, it would take them longer to get the pay. Me personally, if it took me that long, I'd hop to Oshkosh, who would maybe match that pay before I even get to that step. So you're going to have to sell me a little harder on that.
Okay. That was brought up in one of the employee presentations, too, and I get it.
I've heard it from a lot of employees, so.
Oh, okay. Well, no, it's good to know. And so if we came back and said, you know, take your current ranges and let's split them out into more steps, I mean, that would definitely be a takeaway because they'd get to the maximum rate in two more years. The big difference here is we're adding an additional 7% growth. So you know, right now, they can move to 13% above their midpoint under your current plan. Under this plan, they will go up an additional 7%. So it's a much improved position in terms of their ability to earn above-market salaries. And that's considerable, 7%.
If, if you're willing to wait it out. So, yeah.
Well, you know, remember, it's interesting, it's interesting. You know, I will say that we, we did notice that some of the cities have fewer steps than you do. I'm not sure, there may have been one that had more. But that's not the only comparison. What you really have to look at is, is not just how many steps, but how high are those top steps compared to the market? And so here, those top steps are going to be around 20% above market. It may be that in another city, they get to the top step in five years. But if, if we go in and we look and we find that that top step is only 5% above market, that's a big difference. So you get to the top earlier, but you're not going as far as the plan we're recommending.
The 76 that are lower, is there like a broad field you could tell us where we're low in? Is it facilities? Is it waters? What is it? I mean.
You know, there's, there's a smattering. I didn't see any real strong trends that I could say it's, you know, in wastewater or it's in police or, or what have you. There's, there's some in quite a few departments.
Oh, it's across the board, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That's, that's good to hear. Mr. Zimmerman, also I'll add that for many of those, we're talking about a few hundred dollars on an annual basis. But it's noteworthy, right? Because we don't want to start somebody below where they ought to be now that we, now we've made those discoveries.
I think that answers my questions for now, so thank you.
Mr. Heisler.
Excellent. Thank you for the great presentation. I guess my question is, Mr. Moore, as far as the, because she had mentioned during the presentation that from the budgetary standpoint, we're all good there? And that includes bumping up those 76? I just wanted some clarification on that.
Yes, the most, yes. It's affordable, it fits in the budget, the budget has these costs in it. The attending to those 76 people is much less of a cost than adding a step to 240 employees.
Understood.
The, one thing that Mary Ann alluded to is the, the steps now, one step is more valuable in the new plan than in the current. So we've added the step, add even a greater outlay, if you will. Does that make sense?
Yep.
That's the real, real expense right there.
Got it. And then I just kind of wanted to piggyback off of something that my colleague said, Mary Ann, thanks again for the information. Basically, what you're alluding to is by adding a couple of steps, but potentially having that top end be higher, we're looking, they're, they're looking at a much more significant growth rate in, in pay.
Yes.
To break that down for me in real simple terms, that's, I got that correct?
That's it? Yes.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much for the great presentation.
Thank you. Ms. Leering.
I, I forgot to ask you something. So with, with all the increases, will that be at market value? I, I can't remember if it's said in the report, if it brings them up to where the market is, or if it is above the market in, on average? And how much? Like, what's the percent above?
There, there still will be a distribution of people in terms of their relationship of their pay to the average pay in the market. But that's true in, in any pay range. So the way pay ranges are typically developed is that you, you set up that market reference point, that kind of middle value, to be competitive with average pay in the market. And then you, you ask yourself as an employer, how long should it be for somebody coming in the door to get to that rate? Under the proposed structure, people come in, depends on when they come in. If they come in at the minimum, it will take them conceivably five years to, to get to that competitive rate. If they have previous education experience that qualifies them above sort of the minimum rate, they could be brought in higher. That's true under the way you're administering your pay plan now. So, you know, the ranges are moving up. Some are moving up a couple percentage, some are moving up more than a couple percentage. So.
I guess what I'm wondering is.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Are we chasing the market, or is it that we could just have a little bit of a percent advantage?
Okay.
So that we can get the best employees and retain those employees instead of chasing the market?
That, that is a choice you make as an employer. So the structure we're giving you is based on the city's current philosophy of paying competitively, kind of the average of the pack. And by the way, over 90% of our clients pick that philosophy. If you, as a, the decision makers said, we'd like to pay above market, say 5 or 10%, that could be changed. We followed the philosophy as, the current philosophy as it was communicated to us.
Okay. Yeah, I was just wondering, it just seems, and the other part was, did you look at a percent increase every so many years instead of that, doing the study every four to five years? I don't know what's more cost-effective.
It's, it's more cost-effective to make incremental changes every year than it is to come in and do a major study. You know, there's a lot of evidence to support that. But from my understanding of the city, you know, as you do range adjustments each, each, you've been doing them each year. So that practice is solid. I can't explain how so many of your pay ranges became low in the market. It's probably a number of, of reasons over time. There's been a lot of volatility in Wisconsin salaries since the elimination of, what was it? Proposition 10? I'm going to forget it. But there has been in, in the past eight to 10 years, just a lot of volatility, and a lot of our clients are in a catch-up role right now.
Okay. But you would, but you do think it's more cost-effective to do percent increases every so often versus?
Big, giant catch-up. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Leering, also, just so it doesn't get confused, we, we do that now, and we will continue to do that. Everything that Mary Ann has talked about is for the moment of implementation on the 1st of January. That's got all that built into it. 1st of January 2027 will be a result of an adjustment to the entire pay scale that retains everything Mary Ann's talked about in terms of 24 grades, 13 steps, where everybody is. We're not going to reconfigure all of that. We're just going to move the, the scale.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Well, I'm not seeing any questions from other council members, so I'm going to throw a couple of questions out. But if other council members think of questions, feel free to hit your button. I guess I, I do want to kind of jump back to what Mr. Zimmerman was asking about, you know, to convince him about like the steps. Because you also talked about recommending a policy to help employees understand their total compensation package. And first of all, I'm very glad to hear that we have a competitive total benefit package. That's great to hear as an employer, right? But especially if we're looking at recruiting, you know, brand-new employees, people fresh out of college or out of high school, whatever, you know, field they're in, it's hard to convince them that healthcare and retirement are important benefits when they're young and they don't need those things versus pay. So I'm wondering if you could talk about like, what kinds of things do you recommend to help employees understand that part of the package?
What you just brought up is, we, we hear that a lot, which is, you know, some segment of your population, I don't know what percentage of it is, are, I don't want to be ageist, but they're, what, what's the word that you can say? Early career. You don't say young. But their early career, they're having kids, they're trying to buy their first house, and just the statistics show that cash is, is most vital to them, unless they're unfortunate and have an illness in their family, and then that changes. Whereas you get to mid-career and older, what you need personally kind of changes, and so benefits become important. I think that it's awfully difficult to have a benefit plan that provides what everyone optimally would like as, as American or Western Europe. No one's figured out how to do that. So you kind of draw a line in the sand. You try to offer a program that hits as many of the needs as possible. And my own view about this is, you, you just explain how it works, and you be honest about the choices you've made as an employer, and say, we can't meet all of your needs optimally, but we're trying to meet as many of your needs in, in a reasonable way. I think that's just an honest statement.
Do you know if, if other cities that you've worked with in the past, like, have they had success with that? Like, if, if they don't jump into like a big increase in pay, but if they have a good benefit package, is that?
Yes, that's why we recommend more education. It's, it is worth it, for sure. And even some of the questions that I received individually, I thought to myself, boy, I think they're, they're really, the employees really trying to understand how the benefits calculations work and so forth. And there just wasn't really time to sit down with them and teach them today, but they're interested. And, and so I think it's, it's really worth just upping that education a little bit more. And I think, you know, just with the new human resource information system the city's implementing, there'll be more tools to do that, I believe.
Good, good. Well, and that kind of leads into my other question, which was, did you have like a general consensus of questions that employees had as you did presentations today? Were there certain topics that were very common?
Uh, to, to, you know, it, it's interesting because in a group, people don't always ask the things that they may be asking their department heads. But some of the themes I, I think that I heard that we heard were the question about, oh, you're adding two more steps? So, you know, we, that selling point, I mean, that's, it's going to be critical that we really explain that, maybe by examples. You know, we can develop some examples that I think will be helpful. Where folks are looking at, this is human nature 101. They look at the pay grade list and they say, you know, I used to be in the same grade as Tricia Davis, and now she's in a higher pay grade than me. So they become concerned that somehow we've devalued their job, when in fact, the range is going up in many cases. But what's happened is we moved from 18 grades to 24. So relationships are just going to change in some of those cases. You know, because you've had a step plan, they understand how step plans work. You've had pay studies in the past, so a lot of folks understand what a market study is and kind of how that was done. There were questions about the implementation timing, not in a complaining way, like, why aren't you implementing now? But, okay, so if it's going to be implemented, when? And when will we learn exactly what's happening to our pay? These are super understandable questions. So I think the more that, you know, the decision-making timeframe is yours, not mine. But I think as soon as decisions are made, it would be good to, for each employee to get an individual statement of what's happening to their pay. A couple people were so wise about how pay works, I offered them jobs. I'm just kidding. No one wanted to come to Raleigh, North Carolina in the summer. But a lot of people, this isn't what they do. They fix roads, they fight crime, they fight fires. And so they, they need some basic information. My pay is this on January 1st, this is what it will be. And I think that, sooner that can happen, just it'll ease tensions.
Well, so I guess I'll turn to Mr. Moore then and, and ask about the, the timing.
Two months from today. So, you know, we have a special budget meeting every year, the third Wednesday of September. I'm going to ask all of you for a tentative thumbs up, thumbs down that night in terms of our proposed personnel outlay. And if the thumbs up are prevalent, then we're going to issue letters to each individual employee that says, here's what you were making, here's what you're going to make, here's your new grade, here's your new step. And that'll be immediate. That'll happen i- in the third and fourth week of September.
And I feel like that gives us a good amount of time, too, to digest and, and listen for feedback and, and all of that.
Right. We, we always try to give you six weeks between the proposal of the budget and that, that discussion, so that there's plenty of time for all of those things to see how it all fits together.
All right.
Could I add one data point that I hope is illuminating? We have right now 32 employees that what we call are stepped out. They're step 11. So the only time they see an increase is with an economic adjustment, right? So if we were to increase the entire scale of percent, they would see that, but they wouldn't see a step. And that's pretty significant, even in our current plan. So what'll happen is with this proposed plan, it'll break all of them free. So they will, they will suddenly have two more steps conceivably if they were placed in step 11. Now, they may have been placed in a different step, which is even better, because it gives them a longer runway. Does that make sense? So there's going to be a real good outcome for that group.
No. All right. I am not seeing any other questions from council. So, so thank you again for, for joining us tonight and sharing. Yes, thank you so much for all the work that you've done. All right. With that, we will move on to input item B, which is the Police Department 2026 Budget Presentation, presented by Chief Goldstein.
Thank you, President Brol and members of city council. It's both an honor and a responsibility to be for you this evening to present the Police Department's budget. Over the past year, we've made significant progress. Progress that reflects not only our commitment to public safety, but our dedication to building trust and strengthening our community. Tonight, I will provide a concise overview of our budget, key performance statistics, and highlight several new initiatives aligned with our 2025 strategic goals. These programs reflect our evolving approach to modern policing rooted in values, guided by innovation, and built on partnerships. by innovation, and built on partnerships. When we ask our officers to lead with compassion, understanding, and professionalism, we must also ensure they are equipped to do so safely and effectively. Safety doesn't happen by chance. It is a result of deliberate investment in training, tools, and trust. This budget is more than numbers. It's a blueprint for readiness, resilience, and responsiveness. It reflects not just where we are, but where we must go together. Tonight, we'll explore what a 13.3 million department budget truly delivers for our city, our residents, and every visitor who relies on us for safety. Roughly 87% of this budget is dedicated to people, our officers, our professional staff, and the human resources needed to carry out a mission that demands compassion, courage, and commitment every day. The remaining portion supports the tools that empower our people to serve, everything from custodial services and office supplies to evidence management, uniforms, equipment, and the critical training that keeps both our officers and community safe. In short, this budget isn't just about dollars. It's about the people who protect the city and the resources they need to do it well. In addition to our operating budget, we also manage key capital improvement projects funded through general obligation debt or the tax levy. These projects are not decided in isolation. Each one is a result of careful research, strategic planning, and cross-departmental collaboration. For short-term needs, such as patrol vehicle replacements, we work closely with the city fleet manager and mechanics to ensure our officers have reliable, mission-ready transportation. For long-term investments like facility upgrades and building renovations, we partner with city finance and community development to align each project with broader city goals and fiscal stewardship. Every capital project is approached with one goal in mind, delivering smart, sustainable improvements that serve our department today and strengthen our city for the future. In 2026, we will continue our investment in key priorities, including building renovations, essential fleet replacement, and the implementation of a drone as a first responder program, other known as DFR. The DFR program represents a transformative step forward in how we respond to calls for service. By deploying drones to incident scenes ahead of officers, we can quickly assess situations, improve response times, enhance officer safety, and provide critical, real-time information to field units. This technology allows us to make smarter, faster, and safer decisions, benefiting both the public and our personnel. Incorporating DFR into our operations reflects our broader commitment to modern, data-informed policing that balances innovation with responsibility. It's not just about adopting new tools, it's about using them better to protect and serve our community. Here's an overview of our department structure. We are made of nearly 115 dedicated officers, professional staff, and volunteers, all united by a shared mission to protect and serve with honor, integrity, and professionalism. At the core of this organization is an incredible leadership team, individuals who not only lead by example, but drive our innovation, accountability, and a culture of service across every level of the department. We're also proud to share a state-of-the-art public safety training center with our Fond du Lac fire rescue. While we currently have no full-time personnel assigned to the facility, it remains a vital asset for ongoing training, readiness, and inter-agency collaboration.
Hey, where are you going? Fond du Lac railway! You need to apply today! If you apply at the Fond du Lac Police Department, you'll have the opportunity to train here! Apply now, August 23rd! I know why you're in a hurry! The Fond du Lac Police Process is August 21st! Get your application in now! If you're fishing for a new job, apply at the Fond du Lac Police Department. Catch an application online at FBLpolice.com. Did you know Fond du Lac has seven precincts? Wouldn't you want to work in that city? Apply now at the Fond du Lac Police Department!
The Fond du Lac Police Department is having a hiring process, August 21st.
The Fond du Lac Police Department is having a hiring process, August 21st.
Hey, you're the white chief! Come to Fond du Lac and apply!
Let the lighthouse guide your way! The Fond du Lac Police Department is having a hiring process, August 21st.
Attention all firefighters, the Fond du Lac Police Department is having a hiring process, August 21st.
Hey, you, get out of here!
As you just watched, we continue to challenge traditional recruitment models, and it's working. Today, we're attracting candidates with more diverse lived experiences, backgrounds, and perspectives than ever before. When I was appointed chief in September of 2021, our department faced a critical staffing challenge, 25 vacancies that threatened our ability to meet the needs of this community. Since then, through intentional outreach, innovative recruiting strategies, and unwavering commitment from our team, we've turned that challenge into progress. Today, I'm proud to report we are at 97% staffing. Actually, let me change that to 99% staffing as we just introduced Leece Hernandez to our community. That's not just a number. It's the result of hard work, relentless focus, and a department-wide belief in building a team that reflects the community we serve. Our people are our strength, and we're stronger than we ever have been. Our greatest asset is and always will be our people. Strong officers and staff build strong communities, and that strength begins with a foundation of wellness and mental fitness. In front of you is our peer support team. Our peer support members undergo specialized training and certification to ensure they are equipped to provide confidential, informed, and meaningful assistance to their colleagues. We believe that investing in the holistic well-being of the Fond du Lac PD family isn't optional, it's essential. Officers who are mentally, emotionally, and physically well are more equipped to make sound decisions, respond with composure under pressure, and foster meaningful, trusting relationships with the people they serve. Wellness is operational readiness. The better we support our officers, the better they perform, especially in high-stress, high-stakes situations. A proactive wellness culture leads to better outcomes, stronger de-escalation, fewer use of force incidents, improved judgment, and higher morale. It also makes us a more attractive agency to those seeking a career in policing, boosting both recruitment and retention. Our approach is not reactive. It is built into the culture of our department through peer support, mental health resources, physical fitness, and leadership that actively promotes and participates in these efforts. When we invest in wellness, we invest in better decisions, calmer responses, and healthier relationships with our community. That investment pays dividends, not just for our department, but for everyone we serve. The best training builds the best outcomes. In a profession where every decision can have lasting impact, there is no substitute for preparation. We take training seriously because lives depend on it. From scenario-based de-escalation and tactical response to mental health awareness and community engagement, our officers are trained not just to react, but to respond with skill, judgment, and professionalism. Our commitment to high standards is reinforced by our state accreditation, ensuring our practices meet or exceed the benchmarks for modern, accountable policing. What you're about to see is a snapshot of the time, effort, and intentionality that goes into making sure every officer is ready for the realities of the job and to serve this community with excellence.
He's got a knife!
Our commitment goes beyond simply working in the community. We are dedicated into working with the community. Trust is not given, is earned through consistent visibility, humility, and genuine collaboration, not just by showing up, but by listening, partnering, and engaging in meaningful ways. That's why we invest in outreach efforts that extend far beyond routine patrols. What you're about to see is a snapshot of recent community engagement initiatives within the past couple of months that reflect our ongoing promise to build relationships, foster understanding, and create safer neighborhoods together. Just within the last few weeks, we're at the ARC for the Ice Cream Social, and the ARC came to our PD for a tour, met with the Boys and Girls Club for an interaction day, our youth advocacy program, had an awesome program at Taylor Park. We were with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and put on a bike rodeo. We did some reading at Wonder Cafe Storytelling, and we had the Avid Scholars Program. This is all within just the last couple of weeks. Progressive policing means more than enforcing laws. It means transforming how we serve. Our approach is rooted in core values and guided by innovation, transparency, and equity. Historically, policing has relied on outdated strategies that too often fractured trust and failed to meet community needs. We are breaking that mold by embracing evolving standards that not only meet, but strive to exceed the expectations of those we protect. This is modern policing focused on partnership, accountability, and forward-thinking solutions that build lasting trust and safer communities. Through these efforts, we are proud to serve as a model for other police departments across the state and nation, demonstrating what is possible when commitment to progress is matched with action. What follows is a look at some of the innovative efforts driving this new era in public safety. The Domestic Violence Intervention Police Specialist, which started in October of 2024, is a vital part of our commitment to supporting survivors and holding offenders accountable. This role provides compassionate, comprehensive support from initial reports through recovery, offering crisis intervention, safety planning, and connection to critical community resources. By serving as a trusted liaison between survivors and police, the specialist helps build trust and facilitates clearer communication throughout the legal process. Beyond direct support, this position leads education and outreach efforts to raise awareness, promote prevention, and strengthen community partnerships. This program exemplifies our dedication to breaking the cycle of domestic violence and creating a safer, more supportive community for all. From January through June 2025, hold on to it, we responded to a total of 305 domestic violence-related incidents, where 152 arrests were made. The most common domestic violence-related charges were disorderly conduct in 146, battery in 65, and then followed by criminal damage to property, strangulation, and false imprisonment, with the later three reflecting higher risk and more controlled-based forms of abuse. Additional cases involve stalking, theft, resisting arrest, and similar behaviors. The majority of both survivors and suspects fell within the 18 to 44 age range, with the 25 to 34 age group being most commonly involved. Relationship dynamics also offer important insight. Among arrest cases, dating relationships accounted for half, 75 out of the 152 arrests, followed by married couples at 29, family members at 19, roommates at 16, and co-parents not in a romantic relationship at 13. These figures demonstrate a sustained and significant domestic violence issue in our community. The data supports continued investment in response resources, prevention strategies, and survivor services, especially for young adults in dating relationships, where risk and volatility are consistently high. Proactive efforts are essential to break in the cycle of harm and maintaining community When crisis calls, compassion answers. As our community faces rising mental health challenges, responding with just a badge is no longer enough. By embedding a mental health and wellness police specialist and a community response social worker directly within our department, we ensure that the right help arrives, combining expertise, empathy, and understanding. This approach transforms responses from enforcement to true support, meeting individuals where they are and connecting them with the care they need. This innovative approach provides timely assessments, crisis de-escalation, and connections to behavioral health resources, reducing arrests, emergency room visits, and hospitalizations. Together, the co-response team improves crisis outcomes by diverting individuals from the criminal justice system, connecting them to care, and fostering positive, supportive police interactions. Our goal is to provide immediate support, reduce repeat crisis calls, and strengthen community health partnerships. As we celebrate completing our third year, we are proud of the positive impact this program has had, not only improving outcomes for community members in crisis, but also supporting the wellness and effectiveness of our officers. We urge anyone aware of someone struggling to reach out, help is available, and we are committed to connecting every individual to the support they need. Our co-response program continues to demonstrate strong, measurable impact in its third year. Since launch, total co-responses have increased over 20%, going from 334 in year one to 402 in year three, with outreach responses alone rising 45% over that same period. These numbers reflect not only reach, but time and commitment. Our team dedicated more than 780 hours to assessment and outreach in this past year alone. More importantly, this program is successfully diverting individuals away from the criminal justice system and toward the care they truly need. Jail outcomes remained a small portion of our total contacts, rising slightly from 2.8% in year one to 6% in year three, while voluntary hospitalization stayed steady around 15%. Over half of all cases continue to result in a safety plan empowering individuals with tools to stabilize and recover. We've also tracked a new and meaningful trend. In years two and three, over 20% of assessments began as criminal complaints, but shifted to crisis care, proof that this model works. We're helping officers make informed decisions in real time based on mental health need, not just behavior. Even as assessment volume decreased slightly in year three, we remain 12% above our year one baseline. That's a true reflection of smarter deployment, evolving strategy, and a stronger foundation of trust with our community. These outcomes aren't just numbers. They represent real people receiving timely help, officers equipped to respond with clarity and compassion, and a community that is safer because of it. We also value strong community relationships and are proud to have launched the Drexel Outreach Response Program, a groundbreaking partnership with St. Catherine Drexel Selter on March 3, 2025. This innovative co-response model pairs officers with trained case managers to better support individuals experiencing homelessness. By combining police expertise with compassionate social services, this program moves beyond traditional policing to offer tailored, effective solutions. In many cases, the outreach team can respond independently, focusing solely on providing critical resources and support. Since launch, we have seen about 20 calls per month involving unhoused individuals. As this new initiative develops, we are actively analyzing call data and response outcomes we are actively analyzing call data and response outcomes to refine and strengthen the program's impact moving forward. The program addresses immediate needs like food, shelter, and medical care, while guiding individuals toward long-term stability and permanent housing. We extend deep gratitude to Amy Luff and the Drexel Shelter Team for their dedication and partnership, which is key to this program's success. Together, we are building a more compassionate community where no one is left behind. We are committed to disrupting violence before it happens. Through technology, intelligence-led policing, and strong partnerships at the local, state, and federal levels, we are identifying threats early, intervening proactively, and preventing harm, not just responding to it. When violence does occur, our team delivers strong investigative outcomes, ensuring that those who endanger our community are held accountable. This strategy is working. In 2021, we had five confirmed shots fired incidents. That number spiked to 14 in 2022, prompting an aggressive and coordinated response. Since then, we've driven those numbers down, seven in '23, four in '24, and two in '25. This trend reflects the impact of our focused efforts and our unwavering commitment to keeping Fond du Lac safe. Our drug enforcement strategy is clear. We're targeting dealers, not despair. We are focused on disrupting drug trafficking networks, not criminalizing individuals in crisis. We work in close partnership with the Lake Winnebago Area Metropolitan Enforcement Group, some of you know as LWAM, to dismantle supply chains, hold traffickers accountable, and protect those seeking recovery. While fentanyl remains a persistent and deadly threat, we're also seeing a local rise, right here in our city, in cocaine and crack cocaine distribution. Let me be clear. If you come to Fond du Lac to deal drugs, we are coming after you. Through focused investigations and regional collaboration, we are committed to keeping these dangerous substances and the violence that comes with them out of our community. Our approach strikes a balance between enforcement and compassion, disrupting supply while supporting recovery and resilience. You can look on the left. I pulled a national one for you just because of the last city council meeting. Speeding remains the number-one complaint we hear from residents, and we take it seriously. We are protecting our roads with precision by combining data, technology, and community input to drive smarter, more effective enforcement. We utilize overt and covert radar trailers, not just to collect real-time data, but to educate. When drivers see their speed, they often change their behavior, proving that visibility and awareness matter. That same data helps us identify high-risk areas and proactively deploy officers in targeted speed enforcement zones based on crash trends and neighborhood concerns. This is about more than writing tickets. It's about reducing crashes, saving lives, and responding directly to the priorities of our community. And we're sharing that data back with residents, neighborhood groups, and city leaders, because the more informed our community is, the more engaged and safe it becomes. As you can see on the left, that is one just from June of this year that we put on national. As we talked at the last city council, national does have, needs some additional attention, as you can see in there. We don't just track crime statistics. We measure what matters and act on it. Data isn't collected to sit on a shelf. It drives our proactive strategies, identifies emerging trends, and holds us accountable to real results that make a difference in our public safety. These statistics help us create innovative programs and targeted solutions that reflect what's truly happening in our community, not assumptions. But it's important to understand. Crime rates and public safety outcomes are not just a police metric. They're a shared responsibility. Progress depends on strong collaboration between police, city leadership, community partners, elected officials, and our residents. Together, we will make Fond du Lac one of the safest and welcoming cities in the nation. Here's just a snapshot of some interesting data. Over the last year, we've had a 7% increase in our calls for service. We've seen a decrease, 17% decrease, in our physical evidence and property that is processed. But as you can see, in the world of electronics, that has increased 7%. And last year, over 100,000 individual electronic pieces of evidence were processed. Submissions to the crime labs are up 24%. Smartphones analyzed in-house up 80%. We were grateful that we were selected by the Secret Service for one of our property and evidence control clerks to be part of their program, and now we are able to analyze those smartphones in-house instead of waiting years for the state to do that. Open record requests have increased 15%. And then here's two incredible decreases. Reportable use-of-force incidents decreased 16% and reportable vehicle pursuits decreased 12%. This budget reflects more than just what we need. It reflects what our community deserves. It represents thoughtful, prepared, and compassionate public safety, rooted in values, and built for the realities we face today. Behind every number in this budget is a name, a child needing help, a survivor seeking support, a neighborhood asking for peace. This isn't just about funding operations. It's about investing in people, protection, and progress. I thank you for your continued partnership and leadership. Your support empowers us to serve with excellence, to innovate with purpose, and to show up every day for the people of Fond du Lac. Before I welcome you for your questions, this is one of my favorite. I always have Chief Garrettson in my presentations as I showed you our community involvement. We're both involved a lot in the community, and this was just a few weeks ago. We were sponsored by EDIS, and we were ushers at Service League. Service League, correct. Service League, I always get it wrong. Service League, which was an incredible night, and this just captured the smiles that we had that night. So I now welcome your questions and look forward to any of your thoughts.
Thank you so much for the presentation and the incredible photograph here to look at. We will start questions from council with Mr. Heisler.
Thank you, Madam President. On your subject of harm reduction, and terrific presentation, by the way.
Thank you.
I talked to, when we had that incident on June 8 with the bullets were coming into the houses on Re Street, you know? I talked to some of the people on Re Street, and I was just wondering if that particular incident was something that was a shock to the department and caused you to think about different ways of dealing with apartment buildings in town? I know you have a lot of experience with it, so I'm not saying. But my daughter, who lives in Milwaukee, lives around a lot of apartment buildings, and she notices that a lot of them have private security people to provide security around. Is that something that we could ever, like, we're sick of this? We now expect you to do this?
So I will unpack a lot of, you threw a lot of stuff out there, and I'll attempt to unpack it. And the first part of it, which is something that we should all embrace, is so when we talk about that violence, that level of violence and shots being fired in Fond du Lac, that shocks the conscious, right? So we're not, we're a very safe community, and we're at the level that when an incident like that happens, it shocks the conscious, right? So when you say, was that shocking? That is yes, because our Fond du Lac community is better than that. And then, and it randomly happens from time to time, we have human beings. Unpacking the second part of that is, we have an incredible relationship, and I'm gonna call her out, she's in the front row, with community development. And our city legal helps us on different things that we have to do with letters. So in particular, and I'll leave some of the apartment complexes out, right? So, because it's a public forum, is we work hand-in-hand. And if we even start to have, we look at our data, and we start to have trouble in a location, in an apartment, we immediately, so Assistant Chief Scott Kraus, who does our operations, is hand-in-hand with Diane Benson. We bring legal in, we meet with the managers, and there are a lot of things that we can put in place to ask them to do so that we can really mitigate those problems. Now, when they don't want to go, a lot of them are along for the, they understand they want community safety, right? Because they want people to rent in those, in these apartments. When we get some, I'll call them one-offs, that maybe don't want to go along with the program that we have set, there are things, depending on what types of crimes that are there, that we can declare a place a nuisance, and then really place some parameters on them as far as like cameras, having some really good rules in place. And we get to a point to where we actually can invoice you for the time that we're spending at your place because of the nuisances you're having, and you're not cleaning them up. So we do have, I believe, some great city ordinance language that allows us to really keep our finger on the pulse. And it's not in our single homes, right? It's gonna be in our multi-human apartment complexes to where we work together. And I can tell you, we've had, even back to like 2012, we had some really, really good stuff happen at Lake Maplewood Commons. And we're seeing that when we use this process together, city leadership, elected officials, the management, we see great results. It maybe is not as fast as some of us may want, but we do see great results.
But hiring, expecting them to hire staff for security that's not on the radar screen?
That's almost like the old adage where you would walk up to somebody, and they were having a neighbor dispute, and you'd say, pay for offense, right? It's just something that usually doesn't go over well. So we try and start with the things that are non-monetary, and then we have like a tiered approach. And then there are some times that Ms. Benson can work with different grants, and we can get cameras established, and maybe there's, you know, there's different percentages that people could afford. But yeah, moving all the way to armed security is not something that's in our plan, because we want to work within the constraints that we have.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council? Mr. Heisler?
Thank you. Chief, that's the best presentation I've seen from the police department in my entire time on city council.
So no more questions.
That was awesome. It was really, really good. No, just to, I just actually had one really simple thing I wanted you to highlight for me. You talked a lot about peer support in there. Can you kind of give us, like, I don't want you to have to name names or actually use real-life situations, but can you talk a little bit? Can you expand on that a little bit more as far as how that would work?
Yeah, I'll put a little bit of meat on it, because we can obviously spend several hours. So in 2021, when I was interim chief and then moving into being appointed, that was, that was a really high priority, is to get a peer support. And in the team you saw there, it takes time to get everybody, the certifications that they need. It could be, so our people, if you haven't seen some of the research out there, is in your, in your career, you might see, they say, 700 to 800 traumatic experiences in a career, where somebody that's not in this field in their lifetime might see one or two. Bring that now as a visual. So we will have our peer support. If we have something that's a traumatic event, somebody, I'll use as much as like, maybe we were there before fire rescue got there, and we started doing CPR on maybe a young child, or we have a horrific, tragic car crash. Those incidents, we make sure our peer support almost sometimes even gets to the scene. How you doing? What can we do? Can we make some calls? It goes all the way through if they have something that's impacting them personally, right? So if there's something financially or something in mental health. So we have, we want to make sure we have a holistic approach, because the more we do in our walls and we invest in our people, the better they're gonna be out there in our community for our people.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that. And then lastly, I just wanted to ask you about, about your care program related to mental health and things like that. I think it's been just a magnificent improvement to the department. The data, obviously, you shared tonight bears that out. Do you, do you think that's gonna be something where it's gonna, that, that particular department is gonna continue, gonna need to see continued more staffing in the future? Or are you content with staffing levels now there? And that's, and that program's working the way you desire?
You're asking a chief that's pretty progressive, so content's not my vocabulary. It, it takes a lot of people, right? So I mean, to have a social worker, it takes being at the table with Fond du Lac Colony, right? So Fond du Lac Colony graciously started with ARPA, right? And moving into operating budget. We have a mental health crisis. I mean, it's not, that is something I actually talked today at one of my meetings. We have rates of suicide and death by suicide in 2025 are increasing sharply. So the need is there, and the need is not going away. And what we'd like to get to is where the need is managed, and we're doing so much more outreach to where it's not crisis, right? We're meeting people to where they're having ups and downs, but it doesn't get to crisis. That takes human capital. And I mean, I think when it comes to elected officials, it comes to, it's gonna be even all the way up to the state, where the state needs to put some money into these type of programs, because you need nurses and health, you know, I mean, there's, it's a big, it's multifaceted. Is, it should be a top-tier priority for elected officials, legislation, states, to be able to come together and find ways to provide that funding to municipalities like the City of Fond du Lac, so that we can do that kind of work.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate the time, Ben.
Thank you. Well, I'll just jump in here, because I just, I want to echo what Mr. Heisler said. Thank you for all the work that you're doing, especially looking at mental health and how we respond to that as a community. I guess the other point I wanted to touch on is, last budget, we had a lot of members of our community who were really concerned about homelessness. And you touched on the Drexel Outreach Program. I was wondering if you could just speak a little bit more about like what you're seeing and, and what you anticipate that, that program can do for our community?
Yeah, it's not, I mean, a week goes by that, I don't have the opportunity to talk about unhoused. I think for our community, what's, what's been beautiful is there is better awareness. So there's more people talking. That means more people are coming to the table and helping. What we're seeing is we're, we're getting the resources to where those individuals are and getting them as help as quickly as, as we can. When I showed, like, we have about 20 calls a month right now for unhoused, I want you to have an understanding. That includes somebody that might be, you would call panhandling at Festival Foods, and that's that same, you know, so they might not be truly unhoused, but that gets categorized as that. What we're doing with the Drexel Outreach and why we're diving deeper in there is it starts at the communication center when that call comes in, right? So we have identified already four, five, six more calls each month that probably could have been diverted already to Drexel Outreach and not law enforcement responses. So give us a good year of going through with this new program, and what you're gonna see is the right response. What I mean, a non-law enforcement, non-police response to an unhoused situation. And that's where we're at, right? Because if I'm coming to you telling you that we're having a lot of police responses to unhoused situations, now we're talking about behaviors, crime, and everything else. We're not. We're talking about simply these, the people that, they all have individual stories that need some help, and we're, we're just, we're out there, right? So we're a conduit to get them that help.
Thank you, and I just, I want to thank you for your leadership on that and making sure that we're trying to reach people in the best way possible in those situations. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing any other questions from councils. So once again, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
And just thank you to you and your department for all the work that you do for our community every day.
Thank you.
So, thank you. With that, we will move on to Item C of our input items, which is the IT 2026 Budget Presentation, presented by IT Director Ms. Stuvanek.
Good evening, council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on the information technology budget. People often think of IT as the people or folks you call when your Wi-Fi drops, your screen freezes, passwords reset, printer issues, et cetera. And sure, we do those things, but tonight my focus is going to be on what's behind the curtain. I want to introduce you to a city you won't find on a map, our digital city. Every day, residents benefit from the invisible infrastructure that quietly powers our city. Water payments made online quickly and securely. Public safety receiving critical information in seconds when every second counts. Permits processed more efficiently through digital systems. Free public Wi-Fi in parks and public spaces. City services are faster, smarter, and more connected than ever. Behind the scenes, the IT team is working to service and secure the entire digital city in a central foundation that many never see, but everyone relies on. The IT Department operates as an internal service fund and is staffed by a dedicated team of six highly skilled professionals, including an intern. Each team member brings unique expertise spanning infrastructure, cybersecurity, software, and support to ensure our city's technology systems remain secure, reliable, and positioned for the future. We currently have the Senior Network Engineer position currently vacant. I want to take a moment to recognize our incredible IT team. The work you do often happens behind the scenes, but make no mistake, it powers everything we do. You are the foundation of our digital success. Your dedication, professionalism, and deep commitment to excellence have not gone unnoticed. On behalf of the entire city, I want to express my sincere gratitude and thank you for being the backbone of our technological success. We may not be the biggest department, but we are one of the most interconnected. Every service the city delivers relies on the work of this team. I included our mascot, Captain Awareness, to remind every city employee how important their cybersecurity buddy is and to remind them to take cybersecurity seriously. Our mission may sound simple, but it's powerful. The mission is to provide the City of Fond du Lac with innovative technology while sustaining a high level of customer service, network reliability. a high level of customer service, network reliability, and security. These fundamental aspects guide our strategy and shape our future. We deliver a full spectrum of, spectrum of essential technology services that support every city department every day. From 24/7 support, secure and resilient networks, to cybersecurity, compliance, project management, our team works to ensure city operations run effectively, securely, and uninterrupted. We don't just maintain systems, we enable progress, protect vital data, and empower city staff to serve the public. This slide provides a real-time snapshot behind every city service, from clean waters to emergency response that keeps our city running. It evolves year over year, capturing both the expanding infrastructure and the complex systems our team supports daily. The numbers here, though, tell a bigger story. A city that never stops moving, staff that rely on instant secure access to tools and data, and services that must be seamless, resilient, and responsive, day or night. What you see on the slide is not just equipment and infrastructure, it's the backbone of how we serve the residents in this modern world. Now let's see on how these systems translate into real progress because behind every cable, device, and connection is a broader mission. Over the past year, we've made significant progress in modernizing our digital city. We've streamlined our infrastructure, modernized our citywide enterprise resource planning system, delivered key ARPA projects on time and within budget, strengthened our cybersecurity, and introduced new tools and enhanced services, safety and efficiently, across various departments. Many of our recent technology advancements have been made possible by ARPA funding. We strategically invested these funds in fiber and network infrastructure as well as enhancing in the security of our water and wastewater systems, delivering lasting benefits to the computer, community. Key investments include expanding our fiber infrastructure citywide, installing security cameras and enhancements at water facilities, upgrading network infrastructure supporting the wastewater SCADA systems, and building a redundant fiber ring to ensure operational continuity. In addition, ARPA funds enable us to strengthen cybersecurity through implementation of the modern security information and event management system and endpoint management security cyber, cybersecurity solution. Mr. Heisler, I know last year you were specifically interested in the timeline of the Wi-Fi enhancements on Main Street. And as we all know, construction is currently underway and we plan to wrap all the Wi-Fi expansion up by the end of fall. We've made significant progress in strengthening our, our city's technology infrastructure through targeted investments and strategic upgrades. New fiber connections were successfully established at both the public training, safety, the public safety training center in Taylor Park, greatly enhancing connectivity in these areas. As part of the improvement at Taylor Park, we also upgraded public Wi-Fi access and implemented enhanced security measures. To improve network resilience, we're currently coordinating phased installations of redundant fiber at fire stations two and three. This will ensure uninterrupted service in the event of an outage. Additionally, we're planning new fiber installation at Buttermilk Park, which will also allow us to deploy surveillance cameras in 2026, further improving park safety. We also completed a full audit and cleanup of our cabling at our primary data center and main network closet. These infrastructure cleanups reduce risk and improve system efficiency. Beyond these site-specific upgrades, we undertook citywide replacement of aging network hardware, including switches, routers, and servers. Collectively, these infrastructure upgrades position us to deliver smarter services, strengthen system resilience, and support the evolving needs of our community. We've also made significant progress in equipping our workforce with modern technology that enhances speed, efficiency, and reliability across all departments, from first responders, field crew members, to office staff and administrative teams. As part of this effort is a citywide deployment of Windows 11 and Office 365 as Microsoft support ends for Windows 10 this October. So note to everybody, anybody, if you have a Windows 10 computer at home after October will no longer be supported. Other investments that have enhanced operations of deploying mobile devices in our fire apparatuses, upgrading audio/video technology in the fire department's training rooms, installing advanced interview room equipment for our police operations. Furthermore, we've implemented, upgraded, and employed several department-specific software and hardware for various technology projects across nearly every department. These upgrades give staff the right tools to do their jobs more efficiently and effectively. While we continue to invest in day-to-day tools, we're also moving forward with one of the more, most transformational initiatives in our city's history, the Enterprise Resource Planning Modernization Project. This modernization effort is a major investment and it was strongly supported by council and it deserved its own slide. The Enterprise Resource Planning projects are complex transformational initiatives that greatly impact critical city operations from finance, payroll, and HR to procurement, budgeting, and then, and much more. Over the past 18 months, our internal project team, along with GFOA and city staff across various departments, have dedicated hundreds of hours. Key efforts included pre-planning sessions, stakeholder needs assessments, development and release of the comprehensive RFPs, onsite vendor demonstrations, vendor selection and negotiation of strong contract terms. We're excited, excited to announce that Workday has been selected as our ERP software provider and AVAP has been chosen as our implementation partner. You may not recognize the Workday name or logo, but you will soon. You'll start seeing it everywhere. Workday supports enterprise-wide operations in leading public and private organizations worldwide. We officially kicked off this project last week and we're now moving into the implementation phase with a go-live of fall of 2026. I wanted to personally thank our ERP project team. Your dedication, collaboration, and attention to detail have been instrumental in bringing us to this point. We could not have progressed without your tireless work and thank you to the city council, city leadership, and everyone involved in getting us there. While modernization brings us opportunity, it also brings new risk. That's why cybersecurity still remains a top priority throughout the city. And this really sums up the love and hate relationship we all have with cybersecurity. Yes, it's one more step, but it's a very important, necessary step. We're seeing a dramatic increase in cyber threats across the public sector, cities like ours becoming targets, not because we're high-profile, but because bad actors assume that we're underdefended. Endpoint attacks are on the rise, which targeted individual devices like laptops and phones, and over 90% of the data breaches start with a phishing email. 68 to 95% of breaches involve human error and remains the most common cause of breach. That's why we continue to focus on our security awareness training and phishing simulation test. The goal is to shift the culture from reactive to aware so that every employee becomes part of the city's defense. And finally, we're building out what we call layered defense strategy, combining technology, AI, and awareness training. To combat this, we've already invested in the SEAM, the System Information Event Management Solution, which manages and analyzes an average of 1.1 billion logs per month, which is about 36 million logs per day on our network, to detect and alert us before a threat impacts our network. Endpoint detection and response tools give us the ability to not only detect it, but isolate the threat before it spreads across the network. And a new AI-powered spam filter is now blocking phishing attempts before they even reach our inboxes. Since we implemented this in April, our new spam filter has ingested 100,000 emails and has blocked 14 or 1,550 emails as legit phishing attempts and 250 were malware. This means that threats are being stopped earlier with less disruption to operations. Each of these layers detects faster, responds smarter, and lowers the overall risk to our Cybersecurity is no longer just IT's job. It's a shared responsibility across every department and it's not a one-time project. It's an ongoing investment in safety, continuity, and credibility of the services we provide to the community. In 2026, we continue to focus on key technology initiatives that will strengthen city operations, improve security, and enhance service delivery. One of our top priorities is the ERP or the Workday solution that I covered earlier in the presentation. We are also continuing to explore AI. It's already here and it's shaping how we operate. AI is powered threat detection in our spam filter and SIM. New Workday includes many AI functionalities and features to enhance productivity and many other department-specific software and solutions are building AI directly in it. We're also partnering with other municipalities to understand the risk and legal considerations to ensure safe and ethical adoption. Cybersecurity remains critical. We're investing in system redundancy, advanced defenses, and best practices to keep services secure and resilient. Behind the scenes, we're maintaining reliability through infrastructure upgrades, lifecycle replacements, and optimization work that supports all departments. We're phasing out legacy systems to improve performance, reduce costs, and modernize user experience. And I want to extend a sincere thank you to all city departments, department heads, for your continued hard work and collaboration. And before we finish, I want to leave you with this. Next time you pay a water bill, make an online reservation for a park shelter, connect to the public Wi-Fi in a city park, or watch first responders coordinating seamlessly in the field. Remember, that's our digital city that you've helped build. Every click, every connection, every secure transaction is powered by the infrastructure systems and safeguards we've built together. Your investment in technology is not just keeping the lights on, it's protecting critical city services, enabling faster, smarter operations, and moving Fond du Lac into the future securely and strategically. We're not just maintaining, we're shaping the city's digital backbone for the next generation. And we're proud to be the team behind it. Thank you for your trust, your support, and your commitment to progress.
And I'll take any questions. Thank you so much for the presentation. Do we have any questions from council? Mr. Heisler?
Of course I had to ask a question. I got name dropped in the presentation. Ms. Duvinek, you rock for that. That's the first time it's ever happened to me. Thank you very much. That was awesome. No, I just have two quick things. AI uses, you had mentioned it earlier. Are you guys doing like, is, is that a collaboration between like what products are you, are you guys using with that? Is that like a Microsoft Copilot type of thing? Are you using Google for that or ChatGPT? What kind of stuff are you using with AI and what are you using it for?
So we're using, I had a little list here. Let's see, so we, well, everybody's using ChatGPT.
Right. Exactly.
And we do have Microsoft Copilot for select users. Google, all of the above that you listed are listed as far as the, the NLP, the natural language processing, AI generation that's out there. And let's see, is the one I had to rely on you for? Oh yes, the spam filter specifically. And the SIM that I spoke of earlier, which is in the, in our Rapid7 solution. The Alper and Axon. I can get you a list. We created a list, but...
I think that's funny. Yeah. I kind of figured you guys are all over it. That's awesome to hear. I, I was just curious because the other thing that with, at my job and a couple other places that I do is some, do some small-level tech stuff at, we're seeing some equipment that's, doesn't quite hold up as much lifecycle-wise. You know, particularly switches and routers and all that sort of stuff. I know you guys have used obviously enterprise-level stuff for a long time. Are you, are you seeing that at all? Is, have, have your life cycles changed in, in recent years or has it been pretty much the same?
I say that it's been pretty much the same. We, we always keep a couple spares on the shelf. Obviously, we're, if it, we try to replace them on that like seven-year cycle just because when, we don't want equipment failures to happen. So if we have them replaced, then there's less interruption. But seven years is about the guideline.
Excellent. Thanks again for indulging this IT nerd. Appreciate you.
Yep.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other questions from council and I don't really have any questions either. I just, I want to thank you again for the presentation and, you know, just talking about public safety with our police department, thinking about the public safety factors in IT, I think is really important, talking about the digital city. So thank you for you and your team and all the work that you do to keep all of our information safe because, especially with AI, I can't imagine the different, you know, there's always new threats coming in, so.
It's definitely making a challenging and there's definitely some risk factor out there, but collaborating with other municipalities, hopefully we will all get there, so.
Yeah, and it's really awesome to hear about that cooperation that's happening. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, with that, then we will move on to our final input item, which is item D, sale of RDA-owned property at 147 Sheboygan Street and the historic designation of said property and the surrounding neighborhood, presented by Councilmember Schussler.
Thank you, Madam President. I know it's late, but I timed what I was going to say as about seven minutes. Is that okay?
Yep, go ahead.
Did I say anything wrong, Mr. Heisler? Ms. Benson, please feel free to tell me you're all wrong. But I've asked that the abandoned property at 147 Sheboygan Street, which is owned by the city's redevelopment authority, be put on the agenda because of concerns of people in the neighborhood and whom I've spoken with and because it raises larger issues which affect the health and safety of our community, a subject that people don't really give a lot of thought to. 147 Sheboygan Street is important for the neighborhood and important for the city as a whole. I want to have a brief discussion about it because it's been over three years since the city acquired it. I learned from the four-point approach to economic development used by the Main Street program, like our Main Street downtown partnership program, that the way to improve a city is not with grand plans. You improve your city one property at a time. I realize that this property is owned by the city's redevelopment authority, the RDA, and the RDA will make the decision on what to do with it. Fond du Lac's RDA is a separate, independent, and distinct public body created by a former city council for the purpose of carrying out blight elimination and redevelopment programs. Section 66133 of the Wisconsin statutes gives RDAs the ability to carry out their mission. These powers include preparing redevelopment plans, undertaking redevelopment projects, entering into contracts, purchasing and disposing a property, borrowing money and issuing bonds, and condemning property. And I want to express my gratitude to the Community Development Department and the RDA for taking action and obtaining federal funds to purchase 147 Sheboygan Street. No matter what happens, the RDA purchase in January of 2022 shows that the city is working hard to identify blighted properties and is taking action to avoid their demolition if that can be done. No matter what happens to 147 Sheboygan Street, nobody can say that the city didn't do its best to deal with it in the best interest of the city and the neighborhood. 147 Sheboygan Street is across the street from the house that I grew up in. It was built, or at least the first version of it, was built in the 1800s, the late 1800s. The roof is good from what I'm told and everything else with the house, the interior and the exterior is in very tough shape, to say the least. The house, in its current condition, is a hazard to the neighborhood as any unoccupied property would be or is. It has large pine trees leaning against it, which would have to go if someone else takes it. And the property was on the tax rolls assessed for $186,000 up until and including 2021. But the neglect of the property was taking place long before that. There's something that we see all across the country with some, and I say some, old homes, it's called demolition by neglect. Demolition by neglect starts when some, something breaks and something is always breaking in the older home. We once lived in a home built in the 1800s, which I loved, but I know that something breaks or needs attention all the time, every week. And here's what can happen, and I'm not saying it happens a lot, but it can happen. Something breaks and the owners can't afford to fix it. The owners find that they can't afford to maintain their old home, so they just don't. They live there as long as they can. They stop paying their mortgage if they have a mortgage. Sometimes there is no mortgage because it's a legacy property that they may have inherited. Sometimes there is no mortgage, because it's a legacy property that they may have inherited. They don't pay their insurance, they don't make repairs, and then, at the end, of course, they stop paying property taxes. And sometimes this involves mental health issues too, like the chief was talking about. I realize that when this happens. If their lender, if there is one, doesn't foreclose, then the county does its property tax foreclosure, and the property is abandoned, and nobody wants it. And then, the wrecking ball finally comes. And this can happen very quickly. I have a friend who lives out of town, who, when he came to Fond du Lac to visit, enjoyed walking by his old house in a nice historic neighborhood. And the last time he visited, he was walking down the street and came to his house, but his house wasn't there. It had been demolished. One purpose of a redevelopment authority is to prevent demolition where it can. It would not be good if one house after another in Fond du Lac went the way of 147 Sheboygan Street. The city can only do so much to stop this. Citations for code violations, lawsuits to obtain court-ordered repairs, and then RDA acquisitions like this. It's very difficult work that the city is asked to do to clean up after a mess created by someone else, and I'm very grateful to city staff for all of their hard work. People need to take care of their own business, but some of them don't, and I'm grateful that we have the RDA as one tool to deal with the blight. 147 Sheboygan Street brings up a larger issue about blighted properties owned by the RDA, and I'm not asking for a quick answer, I'm just raising the issue. But it would be helpful if the elected officials of the city, that's us, and the public, at meetings like this, which are televised, or streamed, could from time to time be made aware of the properties that are owned by the RDA, with some details like pictures and lot size, current zoning, the permits that would be needed, the asking price, or potential incentives. And I mention incentives because incentives may be cheaper than the cost to the city to tear down a building. If reporting at a meeting or holding a joint meeting with the RDA is not practical, then would it be possible to post this property information prominently on the city's website? I made a similar request about a year ago as to the opportunity sites that were discussed by our consultants from the housing study. Maybe information about RDA properties is on our website, but I apologize if it's there and I couldn't find it, but this is just an idea that I put out there, even if it has to be discussed another time. Anyway, it will be up to the RDA to deal with 147 Sheboygan Street, and I have full confidence that they will deal with that soon. But about 147 Sheboygan Street, I just have a couple of questions for Ms. Benson. So, Ms. Benson, just in case somebody would be willing to take and redevelop 147 Sheboygan Street, my question is, is 147 Sheboygan Street, being in a historic district, subject to any architectural controls or restrictions?
If you eliminated the current federal requirements that are currently in place, no, they're not.
Okay. And so the federal requirement had to do with the purchase?
Yes. And so the RDA has not made a determination whether or not we're not going to redevelop it. So just because an RDA acquires a property does not mean that the only way of dealing with the property is to sell it. The RDA has historically rehabbed single-family homes and then made them available for sale.
One other question. Which properties in this historic Sheboygan Division Street historic district are subject to architectural control, and which ones are?
So the properties that are locally designated as historic. So there are three types of historic designation: local, state, and national. State and national often go hand in hand. If you're going to be nominated for the state, you're also often going to be nominated for the national. It is extremely rare to have a state designation and not a national. If you are solely on the state and national designation, you are not subject to local regulations. They are subject only if they want to pursue tax credits through the state or national to get tax credits for rehabbing their property. If you are locally designated as historic, then you are subject to Chapter 374, which is the city's Historic Preservation Ordinance, which means any exterior alterations to your property are subject to a certificate of appropriateness. You must provide the city with their plans for how you're going to rehab it, and the Historic Preservation Commission reviews that to determine if it's consistent with the historic character of the property.
So how does a property become locally designated and become subject to that?
Oftentimes, we're either approached by the property owner that they want to be designated. So every probably 12 to 15 years, the city does what we call a historical and architectural survey. Our last one was completed in 2011. Once we complete one of those, we always let all of the individuals, or property owners, I should say, on that register or on that survey, know that they're eligible for designation. And then we just, it's more of an informative, and then sometimes I'll reach out and say that they're interested in pursuing. But we do not force anybody to be locally designated.
Thank you. Those are all my questions, Madam President, and that's all I have to say about this agenda item.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from other council members? I am not seeing any. Mr. Schussler, did you have any further?
No, the purpose of asking for this to be on the agenda is to create awareness about a problem that could be a growing problem, and hopefully, it won't be a growing problem, but, and then, my heart, of course, close to this neighborhood, having grown up there, so.
And I'll just say, because I live on Sheboygan Street, I'm at 196, so I'm not far from this property. I will say that my general experience is that people who live in that area are very proud to live in historic homes and want to take care of their properties. So I think this is kind of an unusual case in that neighborhood. I don't know if that helps the situation any, but, like, I'm happy to live there too, because of all the history and everything, so. Anyway, Mr. Heisler has...
Thank you very much. No, just, I just wanted to make a quick observation. Thanks, Madam President. I thank you, Mr. Schussler, for the credit you're giving to RDA, because as the, as the council liaison to RDA, it's a, it's a really wonderful organization. It's, it's set up extremely well. The folks who are on RDA, just like all of our other volunteers for all of our other boards and commissions, they really work hard to do the job, and they really dig in on these properties and issues. So it's, it's nice to have, have their good work highlighted, and I know this will be something that RDA will continue to work towards, so I appreciate the recognition. Thank you very much.
Nothing further.
Okay. Well, thank you to Ms. Benson for the information for Mr. Schussler's questions, and thank you, Mr. Schussler, for bringing this to our attention and making sure that we are aware of this property and the process that RDA goes through, so thank you. All right, with that, we have no other input items, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion by Mr. Zimmerman, second by Mr. Heisler. This is not debatable. Please proceed to vote. All right, that passes unanimously. We are adjourned.